Hello, everyone. Good afternoon. Thank you so much for joining us today for Gen Chem Study Session Review 2. We are joined today by Dr. Taylor for this exam review. So during the process of this review, if you have any questions, please post them in the Q and A and we will get to them. And I will go ahead and hand things over to Dr. Taylor.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Yeah, I have my camera off today in the hopes that that makes the quality of the video and the recording better because I'm on campus Wi-Fi today. So a couple of things. We are talking about Exam 2. So Exam 2 does cover the following sections. It's just that very, very end of Chapter 14. So when we were doing kinetics and talking both about what a catalyst is, what a catalyst does, and then working with the various reaction coordinate diagrams. So those were the things that looked something like this. And all of the interesting stuff that went along with this, so dealing with intermediates and catalysts, dealing with elementary step reactions, dealing with activation energy, dealing with rate laws and rate laws of the rate determining step. All of those things, all of those things. So that's in Section 4.7 to 4.8. Then Chapter 16, this is the equilibrium chapter. So this is when we were dealing with a lot of Q and K and rice tables or ice tables, and all the various interesting things that went along with that, as well as conceptual questions about what equilibrium is and what it means and what it doesn't. And then we end with acids and bases. And some of this does come back to equilibria. In a lot of cases, it does, but there's also some things that are unique to acids and bases, dealing with things like their definition, their Bronsted definition, dealing with things like being a proton donor or a proton acceptor, and then relating things, then dealing with things like pH and POH. So a couple of different things, but the lovely thing to me is, once we do equilibrium, which we've done, everything will go back to equilibrium over and over and over again. So all the hard work that y'all put in in Chapter 16 definitely comes back. One other thing I wanted to note while we're doing introductory stuff is that there is a slight room change in here. So you might notice that if you used to take your exam in ECSW, that giant room, we don't have that giant room for Exam 2. So instead, y'all are all broken up into different places, but you are broken up into places like Green and Johnson. So for some of you, Green and Johnson are familiar places where you may have had other classes before. For some of you, you've never actually been in those buildings. So do make sure that you go check them out beforehand so you know where you're going day of the exam. Yep, Green. The Green Room, I don't think is terribly difficult to get to. Johnson, Johnson's usually the one that if you've never been in Johnson before, you definitely need to go check that out. The other thing I wanted to point out is that the new potentially useful information has been posted. Dr. Deekman was talking about maybe adding something else to it. I don't know when he's going to do that. I checked about a half an hour ago and it wasn't, and this is what was posted. So the thing is, is that our general thought is to just add things to this as we go along. So you might notice that there are some new things, mostly down here. So there's pH and POH and information about KW and PKW is all hanging out down there. And then there's also this one that talks about KP and KC is in there. There's also this other thing here that is actually from the Arrhenius equation. We do not use that. We don't test you guys on that. It's interesting. It relates this rate of a reaction to temperature, but we do not actually test on that. But we gave you the equation just because it's, it's, it's in there, but we're not going to use it. Everything else is from the previous exam. Really, the only thing that's going to move forward that you might care about is, we did go ahead and leave on there that definition of molarity. So for some of y'all keeping in mind, oh no, what if I need molarity? We talked about so many different concentration units, the molarity is still on there. So the fact that it's moles of solute by liters of solution, that is still there. I really think that's the only thing that we're going to be using. Yep, but everything else is still here. So good news is that if you need it, if you want it, it's still going to be on there. But those, those are the main things I wanted to point out on that potentially useful information page. Okay, so I actually had asked my class about some questions. So if y'all don't have questions for me, I brought, I brought some just in case. Since I though have given a little bit of time, I thought I would go ahead and see if there were questions in the chat. So are there questions in the chat to get me started?
Yes, ma'am, there is one. It's a little long. So on the end of textbook problems number 14.68, asked about enzyme catalyzed reactions, but do we need to know that? Oh, it's a multiple, sorry, it's multiple parts. It's seven questions, eight questions?
Okay.
Okay, well, I guess we'll start with that one then. On the end of textbook problems number 14.68, asked about enzyme catalyzed reactions, but do we need to know that?
So in general, like, I'm going to grab my textbook real quick. This is where sometimes I would grab Alex. But so here's, so here's always the tricky part with answering the question of do we need to know that? Is, what's the question actually ask? 14.68 asks, are catal, enzyme catalyzed reactions example of homogeneous or heterogeneous catalysts explained? So here's the thing. Every single word in there should be something that you recognize. So essentially, when we talk about catalysts, we did cover catalysts. We also covered the terms heterogeneous and homogeneous catalysts. So homogeneous catalysts being ones that are in the same phase. So solid, liquid, or gas. Heterogeneous. Being in different phases. And we did cover briefly the fact that an enzyme catalyst is a biological catalyst. I think that's all we really said about it. That being said, this potentially makes a which of the following is true, which of the following is false style of question. So even though this is exceptionally short, it's mostly just a couple of definitions. I'm going to go ahead and say yes. I know I covered it. It's, I think, in my notes, it's like the very last slide. It's just one slide. But every single word in there is valid. That actual question that's asking basically, what is an enzyme catalyst? Is it a homogeneous or a heterogeneous catalyst? The tricky part of that is that it would need to tell you for us, it would need to tell you the fact that enzymes, I would actually count enzymes as being aqueous. So basically, as long as your reaction was aqueous, then you could, you could make that claim that as long as all of your components were aqueous and your enzyme is aqueous, then that's all the same. So that does, so yes, you do need to know that. You're also responsible for catalysts. So you are definitely responsible for this idea that what a catalyst does is, a catalyst is going to lower the activation energy. So it's going to increase the rate of your reaction. We talked a bit in that section about the fact that your activation energy is the thing that'll demonstrate essentially how long or what's going to control some of the speed of your reaction. So if this is my uncatalyzed reaction, red, uncatalyzed. And then I'm going to come through with my beautiful blue highlighter and make another line, but my line goes like this. But it should have the same beginning and it should have the exact same end. This would then be my catalyzed reaction, essentially catalyzed reaction. Essentially, it should be something with a lower activation energy. It should be something that's going to be able to have the reaction itself go faster because you should wind up with more effective collisions because there's not as much energy required to get to that transition state at the very, very top. So essentially, part of what I'm trying to do is also mention some of the terminology that goes along with that unit. Because that a lot of times is what happens is when we talked about that very end of Chapter 14, it hopefully didn't seem too bad, but there's a lot of words. There's a lot of different vocabulary and a lot of different terminology involved in all of that. So transition state, intermediates, activation energy, all of that, all of that goes into that end of Chapter 14. Okay, what's the next question?
Okay, so the next part is, can you please go over number 86 on Chapter 14?
What's, what's next? What else is in there?
Oh, can you review the differences between the indications of a strong acid between oxo acids and binary acids?
Okay, what else?
Can you tell if a reaction is endo or exothermic without knowing the delta H? Numbers, and parentheses, number 78 on Chapter 16, end of textbook was able to. Number five, please, excuse me, please explain number 82 on Chapter 16, end of textbook problems.
Okay.
Number six, how does increasing or decreasing in aqueous reactants pressure impact the reactions equations if all reactants and products are aqueous? Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Okay, what's next?
Please review number 94 on Chapter 16, end of textbook.
Okay.
Question. Number eight, and the last one, how do you know something can act as both an acid or a base? Example NH3.
Fabulous. Okay. Okay, so here we go. So one thing I'm going to do is, I'm not going to forget these, but basically, the catalyst one was easy to go over because it's one single sentence. The rest of these, we'll just see where we go on time because one of the things I may do is I may do this in the follow-up video, depending on how easily I can grab the whole question, especially if these are calculation questions. Because it's a lot easier for me to screenshot them, but a lot of that depends on how cooperative Alex is. So we'll, we'll see, but I will not forget those. Then, okay, let's actually talk about increasing or decreasing the pressure if all of the pieces are aqueous. So what this is trying to talk about is we covered this notion that if we were talking about something where everything was gases. So this is one where if we're talking about everything being gases, a lot of times we use this reaction. This is the Born-Haber reaction. It is usually talked about in two different contexts. The nice one being its current use, which is it's what makes ammonia, which makes fertilizer, which is part of why we can feed our global population as well as we do. So, but this is all gases. So there are four moles of gas on the left. And there are two moles of gas on the right. So if I want to talk about pressure changes, volume changes, anything like that, this equation winds up being really useful because we can describe different changes in volume or different changes in pressure and what's going on, especially in regards to equilibrium and Le Chatelier's principle. But the question we have is, what if everything was aqueous? What if this looked different? So what if we had something like, we'll go ahead and do HF with H+ aqueous and fluorine, chloride aqueous. What, what happens if everything is aqueous? So now in this case, I do still have a difference in moles. I've got one mole over here. I have two moles over here. One of the assumptions that we make when everything is aqueous, like it is here, is we actually make the assumption that there is little to no change. So in general, pressure effects on liquids, they do technically exist, but usually you have to get some pretty drastic pressure changes to actually make anything happen in here. And so we don't typically worry a lot about pressure changes in aqueous environments because for the most part, you're not going to experience those, or they're going to be really, really specific instances. We have a tendency to do a lot of experiments on the benchtop, open to one atmosphere. So this one doesn't affect us very much. The gases does because since gases do that interesting thing where they take up as much space as you give them. When you are doing reactions with gases, typically there is a control mechanism for controlling how much space they have. And if you control how much space a gas has, you're automatically controlling the pressure or having an effect on the pressure. So when we talk about pressure effects and Le Chatelier's principle, we worry about it with gases. We basically don't worry about it with aqueous or, or liquid phases. For those of you that would like something that is more descriptive and be like, yeah, but what, what really is it? That's a great question for office hours. Honestly, for exam reviews, I try to focus on what we would ask for an exam and we would essentially go with no change or essentially realistically, no change. So if you want more like nitty gritty details and like, but what if it did? That's more of an office hour question because otherwise I don't want the majority of people to assume that you get big changes with aqueous because you don't. Okay, so answer that one. I need a different color. You, you might not, but I do. Check mark. You know, I do acids and bases and ammonia. So as far as acids and bases and ammonia goes, so there's two different schools of thought when it comes to ammonia. So in our notes, in, in my notes, I was looking at this, this morning. In my notes, it actually goes ahead and says, all right, so if we're going to look at ammonia and if we're going to assume that ammonia is a base, which is, that means that it needs to be a proton acceptor. If it's going to be a proton acceptor, that means that it's going to basically absorb, take on an extra hydrogen and the positive charge that comes with that. Now, if you want to say, but what if it was an acid? It's got extra hydrogens, then it needs to be a proton donor. In that case, we need to get rid of a hydrogen and get rid of one of the positive charges that would have come along with it. So you can look at a lot of different components to say, hey, what's going on with this? Now, I will say that for ammonia, we almost always treat this as a base. So we almost always treat this one as a base and therefore we can then talk about the conjugate acid being the ammonium ion here on the right. This other one here in blue on the left does exist. It takes kind of more specific conditions to actually get it. So we don't often talk about it as much. But the base NH3 and ammonia and its conjugate acid, the ammonium ion, y'all are going to see a fair amount of those because those do crop up a lot. Now, keep in mind, we can do this with a lot of different components. So for example, gosh, almost any of your polyatomic ions. I know you guys are so excited about your polyatomic ions. Let's do one of the ones you guys might not have seen as much. Let's do chromate. So here's your polyatomic ion chromate. I could go ahead and make that be chromic acid. Someone else had actually asked me, what about polyatomic ion names? Honestly, they're going to help you identify what's going on. So this is the chromate ion, so therefore this is chromic acid. So since it's called acid, it does have all those beautiful protons in them. So we could think about a conjugate base being of this species being this guy. Now, the thing is, is that this, so the top one with two protons is the acid. This down below it is the conjugate base. Now, that means that those two things are going in pairs together. Because the tricky thing is if the only thing that you had was HCO4 minus, the tricky thing with this one is that one can also go in two different directions. Because it can either go ahead and act and, and take on another proton. It could accept a proton. So if we're doing the one to the left in red, then this is now my new conjugate acid, which means I was treating my species in blue, my HCO4 as a base. But I could also treat HCO4 as an acid, which case I could go ahead and remove a proton. Oopsies. Remove a proton, just like I said, to give you the chromate anion negative two. And now this is a conjugate base. So realize that part of the, this is an acid, this is a conjugate base, is also thinking about where it's starting from or where the pairs are. So sometimes we just refer to things as conjugate acid-base pairs. And that way, we don't always have to think of the beginning and the end. But there are species, especially when you're looking at polyatomic ions, that could absorb multiple protons. Those things in between mean you have multiple options that could go in either direction. And it just, it just depends on the setup, or they are then things that are by nature amphoteric. So this thing where I have both base and acid written down, this is amphoteric, meaning that's both an acid and a base. So I definitely understand that idea of like, which, which one is it? And how do I know? And a lot of times, it's paying attention to the question and the question will say, which of the following is the conjugate acid of this thing? And then if you want the conjugate acid, you want the thing that has added a proton. Maybe you want the conjugate base, in which case you want the thing after it has donated a proton. So acids donate protons. Since they are donating protons, the acid has to have a proton to give away. That's part of your definition of an acid. It's got to have a proton that it can get rid of. Your conjugate acid should basically have gained another proton from wherever you started. The base should have one less proton from wherever you started. Hopefully, that is helpful. For the record, dealing with conjugate acids and bases and how do I recognize them is a really common question. So that's a really good place to look at things like end of chapter questions and what are, what are some of the different options? Because there's, there are a lot of them. There are a lot of them. I saved for myself strong acids, oxo acids versus binary acids. Save this one for a reason. That's because honestly, this one's just going to sound like my lecture because, which I haven't done this one yet. I felt, I don't feel too bad. But I took questions from my students and one of them was like, I heard that we're behind compared to other sections. And I'm like, because I spent a lot of time in equilibrium. Okay, so first of all, binary acids, binary acids are going to go first. The thing with binary acids is they are hydrogen plus an element. So some of the most common ones, so first only grab a periodic table. Oh, we're all over the place. That's about right. There we go. So when we say a binary acid, it's hydrogen and an element, what we're saying is that we are going to have things like fluoride and enough hydrogens to cancel out that negative charge. So you would get HF. We could actually pick oxygen and the oxide anion by itself would look like O2 and enough hydrogens to cancel that out. And we could look at nitrogen and the nitride anion and we would need enough hydrogens to cancel that out. So we can go ahead and look at binary acids in two different ways. So there's two different trends to look at with binary acids. One of them is as you go towards fluorine and go across the row. The other one is as you go down the row. That was supposed to be a down arrow. Let's see if I can make that look a little prettier. So one of them is as you go across from left to right. The other one is as you go down. So the one I just set us up for is the one as you go across. So the one, as you go across, what you are looking for here is essentially the more electronegative or as you go across, you get a stronger acid as you go across. This is going to be dealing with things like electronegativity. You typically are getting more electronegative as you're going across. So we are going to have essentially a weaker bond. So for example, when I say a weaker bond, what I mean by that is if I'm thinking about my hydrogen, I'm going to keep going because this, this trend does exist. It just looks a little weird to me when I do this. Essentially, this fluorine connected to this hydrogen, they are strongly connected. It is a strong bond. But that fluorine is trying really hard to pull lots of the electron density away from the hydrogen so that the fluorine gets it all to itself. Fluorine's a bit selfish like that. So this one might look a bit like this. And the oxygen, I have to admit, it's not a whole lot better, but it's a little bit better. So oxygen typically shares a bit better. And if I was perfect, then this, the, the area that I am shading in would be the same between oxygen and fluorine. It's probably not, but hopefully you can see that I am coloring more on the hydrogen itself because the bond between the oxygen and the hydrogen is stronger than the bond between the fluorine and the hydrogen. Fluorine is more ready to let go of this hydrogen because it's sharing the electron density less well versus the oxygen and the hydrogen are sharing that better. And again, this is not going to be perfect, but the nitrogen is going to share that even better. So the nitrogen is still electronegative, so it's still going to have more electron density than the hydrogen, but it is sharing better than the oxygen is. The better it shares, the worse it is as an acid. Remember that if we want to talk about something being an acid, we're trying to talk about something as the ability to let go because we're trying to donate that proton. So we're trying to get rid of the proton. We're trying to donate it and that's what gets you a stronger acid. So the worse it is at holding on to the proton, the better, the stronger the acid. So the worse the atom, I'm going to put this in quotation marks, holds on to hydrogen, the stronger the acid. So the better something is at holding on to its hydrogen, the worse it is as an acid, the better it is as letting go of the hydrogen and being like, I don't want this thing. You can have it, the stronger the acid it is. So all I have done so far is binary acids in one direction. So let's go ahead and talk about binary acids as you go down the row. As you go down the row, we're using the same general idea, which is the worse it is at holding on, the stronger the acid. But now we need to think about size because that's going to be the big takeaway for this. So it's been a long time since Gen Chem 1 and we dealt with size. But thinking again about fluorine connecting to its hydrogen and the fact that fluorine is in row two, so therefore has essentially two shells. And then chlorine has essentially one, two, three shells. So its hydrogen is going to be over here and then bromine has one, two, three, four shells. So its hydrogen is going to be over here. So I did fluorine and then chlorine and then bromine going down the row. So that's supposed to be fluorine, supposed to be HF and HCl and HBR. So the thing is, is that as we go down, this hydrogen gets further and further away from the nucleus. So even if bromine was halfway decent at sharing, they're all halogens. None of them are excellent. The irony is, is that this hydrogen is really far away from the nucleus. It's hanging out very far away. So because it's hanging out farther away, you're going to get stronger acids the lower down you are, weaker acids higher up. higher up for the same reason that we were talking about before. Because you're actually going to have, um, a weaker bond. So more easily giving away hydrogen. Or HBR. For HF, it's actually a stronger bond. It's actually better able to hold on to its hydrogen. So for the binary acids, as you go across the row, the acid gets stronger. As you go down the column, your acid gets stronger. So honestly, that part right there usually confuses people. Because I did what I do in class two, which is I wind up using fluorine twice. Um, so keep in mind that when we do this, we have to go in order that makes sense. We have to go in order that you can guess. Um, so we have to either go across the row or down the column, or in a way that the acid should always be getting stronger, or in a direction that the acid should always be getting weaker. So down the column is a stronger acid. Across the row is also a stronger acid. And those are just for binary acids. Just for binary acids. Oxo acids. Have this word in them, oxygen. Which means all your oxo acids have oxygen in them. Um, we usually do four different flavors of oxo acids. I'm only gonna do three out of the four, mostly because of time. Um, unless somebody really wants the fourth one, uh, in which case we just turn this into lecture instead of an exam review. Um, so oxo acids. Uh, the first thing you can do is different oxygens. A different number of oxygens. So this would look something like this, um, HClO, HClO2, HClO3. The bottom line is, the more oxygens, stronger the acid. This is for the same reason, which is the more oxygens you have, the more electronegative essentially. Um, the more oxygens you have, the more electron density is pulled away from your hydrogen. So it's easier to pull it apart, to pull it away. So your hydrogen is easier to remove the more oxygens you have because the oxygen will help pull the electron density away from the hydrogen. So if I was gonna go in and just color over these, this one with just one oxygen might look like this, where again, it's incorporating most of the hydrogen. The second with two oxygens is trying, but the more oxygens we have, the worse of a job it's doing. The more electron density is over the rest of the molecule. And now with three, more of the electron density is gonna be hanging out with those oxygens. So there's gonna be less electron density left over to strengthen the bond between the chlorine uh, and the hydrogen. Yeah, less electron density, keeping that hydrogen there. Less electron density, weaker bonds, weaker bond, stronger acid. The more readily the acid is to let, to be, to let go, the more easily the proton can be donated, the stronger the acid. Okay. Um, different, we refer to it as a hetero atom, but some people just call it the X atom, uh, which is the atom, we're dealing with the chlorine. Um, we're looking for, so this would be something like, um, HClO, HBrO, HIO. Um, here we are looking for, um, let me just make sure I get this, all of these things. Da 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 da, oxygen. Yeah, as the electronegativity increases, you get a stronger acid. So we're using the same notion we were before. Um, so more electro, oopsies, where's my pen goes, more electronegative X, um, more acidic, same reason. More electronegative, the atom is, the more it's pulling the electron density towards itself, the less well that it's sharing, oopsies, wrong way. The less well that it's sharing, so therefore you are going to have, um, more a better acid because it's sharing less well. So the chlorine's actually gonna be most, most electronegative here. Then the bromine is gonna be halfway okay. And then the iodine is actually gonna be the best at giving that hydrogen a bond to hold on to. Uh, the last one I'm gonna do mostly because it's basically the same as number two. So it's supposed to be the different X atom in the middle, uh, but same oxygens. The last one is carboxylic acids. Um, these always sound like they're really fancy, but the truth is, is that it's exactly the same as number two. It just looks different because a carboxylic acid, uh, has more components to it. So a carboxylic acid has a carbon and an oxygen and another oxygen, and then the hydrogen. And then we'd stick my chlorine over here. Um, so they tend to look like this, COOH. And then here's my chlorine. Um, my bromine, COOH. My iodine, COOH. So the carboxylic acid group is just this COOH monstrosity. So I went ahead and drew out the Lewis structure in the case that that helps. Remind you all what that looks like. Um, but we are gonna use the exact same idea as we did above, which is the more electronegative, the more acidic. Also applies to the carboxylic acid, applied up there too. Um, which means that this is more acidic. Okay, um, I am purposefully leaving out the last one because for some folks, they either haven't heard this or have not heard this very often. And honestly, you're better off understanding binary acids and oxo acids that we've just covered than worrying about number four. But I will just basically write number four, uh, down here and put, um, does not need to be bolded. Um, this has, uh, it's what happens if you change multiple things, uh, different X, different number of oxygens, that's not a hashtag. Number of oxygens. So that's the last one. I'm just gonna tell you to look in the notes. If you guys really want me to cover it, um, let me know and I can put that in the follow-up video. But that also takes some considerable time to cover. Okay, I've been talking now for about a half an hour straight. So it's a good time to take a look and see how we're doing on questions in the chat. So how are we doing on questions in the chat?
Okay, so we have one that asks, can you explain the effects of changing volume and pressure has on gaseous reactions?
Awesome. Hey, anything else?
Um, we have, can you go and also go into depth on what it means to have dominant species, a dominant species at equilibrium? Uh, when making an ice table, how do we know which variable is to set up as X or negative X? And also can you explain how to set up the ratios? Oh, yeah, two more. In what context is the Q expression usually used? And then the textbook said that NH3 could only be considered a base, so would NH2 negative? So would NH2 negative not be considered a base, I'm assuming?
Anything else?
Ah, that's it for now.
Okay. Um, so honestly, you talked, saying that ammonia is only a base is my personal preferred way. Uh, because honestly, this is what you usually find. This is what is stable, this is normal. Uh, the NH3, the NH2 negative, I mostly put in there because I was doing my notes this morning and it's in there. I need to take that out, but I also need, before I take it out, I need to see if any of my colleagues still have it in there. Um, so, but calling NH3 a base makes a lot of sense because that typically, for, basically for all the reactions we're gonna do, that practically is what this is. Um, also, if textbook says it can only be a base, then I would love to see that page number. Um, because that way, if we're gonna take something out, then I can be like, well, the textbook says this, so we can't test on it in any other way. Because we try really hard to not test on things that are one way in our notes and a different way in the textbook, unless we've covered them explicitly. And when I say we, I mean all four of us. Uh, because we have to all be consistent. Okay, um, so the other reason why, so I have not forgotten that there are questions up here. Uh, the tricky thing with the questions that are left up here is they are all some sort of end of chapter question. Uh, and I was already really tempted to leave the end of chapter questions to next time. So to the follow-up video. So I have not forgotten that they are there, but do you realize that odds are really good that, um, I'm, I'm gonna leave them alone? Um, this is me writing them down ever so briefly, 78, 82, 94. Um, so if we have extra time at the end, I'll come back to them. But I've not forgotten they existed. Also, there's me scrolling through the backup questions I had just in case. Okay, effects of volume and pressure in gases. So I'm gonna go ahead and go back to the one I was mentioning before, which is the, um, 3H2 as a gas plus into as a gas is equilibrium with ammonia as a gas. Two, two, duh, two. There we go. Um, so here's, so here's the thing, and honestly, I'm gonna do this the long way because I think that this might help. So we're gonna do, make a really wacky assumption. Um, and we are going to assume, or I'm gonna tell you, the problem, problem states. The problem states, um, your equilibrium pressures are all one atmosphere. Then volume doubles. Which direction does the reaction shift? And why? So first of all, problem states equilibrium pressures are all one atmosphere. So therefore, if I wanted a KP expression, I could go ahead and say that KP is gonna be the pressure of my ammonia squared divided by the pressure of my hydrogen cubed times the pressure of the nitrogen to the first power. So here's my KP expression. The problem states that at equilibrium, they're all one. Great. One squared divided by one cubed times one. That is one over one, which is one. So I have a value of KP, it's one. Yes, this is to make my life easier. Then the volume double. So this is the time where we do need to think back to gas laws. So for those of you that either didn't have Jin Kim one with us or for years, or whatever the case may be, then this might be new information for you. But we could talk about the fact that if I have a bunch of gases inside of a box and then my box gets bigger and I still have the same number of moles, my volume increases, but my pressure decreases. This is also known as Boyle's law. Back in gas laws, we did something like this, P1V1 is equal to P2V2. So the only reason I put that equation up there is to remind you that we have hopefully maybe seen it before. But otherwise, what might be familiar is the fact that when I have a small volume and I've got five particles in the box, I've got a lot more space when the box gets bigger. The more space I have in there, the lower the pressure's gonna be. The, I get pressure in this box whenever a particle actually hits the wall of the container. So the fewer times that the particles hit the walls of the container, the lower my pressure is. For those of you that would like more of that, um, there is actually a FET gas simulator that I really like. Um, that does a pretty nice job of demonstrating what that is and what that looks like. So for people that are like, but volumes and gases and blah. Um, so here I am putting gases in a container. And the only thing that this is gonna do, move faster, my little particles move faster. Um, is we can watch the pressure gauge here. And all I'm gonna do is you can watch how quickly, uh, how many times that those spheres hit the walls of the container if I shrink my container. My pressure also goes up quite a bit. So I can make the box bigger and then my pressure should go down. I can, and there's fewer collisions with the walls. I can make the box smaller and I should get more collisions with the walls, the pressure goes up. So the volume goes down, the pressure goes up. The volume goes up, the pressure goes down. So volume and pressure are related to each other through an ideal gas equation. So since my volume went up and my pressure is going down, the volume doubled, all of my pressures are gonna go down by a half. So my volume went up by two, my pressure's also gonna go, go down, but set it by two, by a half. So what I wanna see then is essentially my Q expression. So Q's gonna be the same expression, the partial pressure of ammonia squared divided by the pressure of hydrogen cubed and the pressure of nitrogen. But now, all my pressures used to be one, now they are all gonna be one half. So now I have one half squared divided by one half cubed times one half. So that's one-fourth divided by one-eighth times one-half or 0.25 divided by whatever one-sixteenth is. 0.0625, yes, I am just gonna use my calculator for this. Or grand total of four. So all I'm doing is I'm just doing the math. We said that the pressure goes down by a half, so I just plugged all my pressures in again. I now have a Q of four. Well, originally I had a K value of one. I now have a Q. Those are Ps, we did pressure, I now have a QP of four. My Q value is greater than my K value. So because Q is greater than K, what that should mean, and you can actually see it here in the, um, my point two-five versus my point zero six two-five, my products are bigger than my reactants. And what I was set up for is that I should have them be about the same. But here I have about 10 times, not quite 10 times, but a lot more group products on the top in a numerator than I have my reactants in the denominator. So since I have more on four products than I have reactants, um, I actually need this reaction to shift back to the reactant side. So this is gonna shift left towards reactants. And we did all of that because of Q. Now, the reason that I did it this way is because the other thing that's happening here is I got lower pressure. Because I got lower pressure, I should want to go towards more moles of gas. My pressure went down. Since my pressure went down, basically what I should wanna do is do something that gives me more moles so that I could essentially re-establish a higher pressure. That's really what I'm looking for. It just so happens that my more moles of gas are to the left. So that's the way that this went. So I had two moles of gas here. I have four moles of gas here. When you increase the volume, that decreases the pressure. So you shift to more moles of gas. moles of gas. So that's the bottom line. Volume goes up, you shift to more moles of gas because your pressure went down. Now, the thing is, is that this is not a products or a reactants thing. This is a more moles of gas thing. So, for example, if I had something where I had three moles of gas here and I only had one mole of gas. Oh, the same way. I want to do, I want to be different. So one mole of gas on the left, three moles of gas on the right, so now I have fewer moles of gas on the left, and I have more moles of gas on the right. Now, if I did the exact same thing and I said that the volume goes up, that would mean that the pressure would go down. That would mean here that I'm still going to shift to more moles of gas. But now, more moles of gas is to the right. So one of the things that you have to watch out for whenever you're talking about Lachatley's principle and dealing with changes in pressure, dealing with volume changes, is while we are still going to ask, does that shift to the left, does that shift to the right? You need to be able to say, what's that based on? Is that because that's where the products or the reactants are? Is that because it's exothermic or endothermic? Or is that because there's more moles of gas or fewer moles of gas? So there's a lot of different rationale behind why this is happening. So keeping in mind what's going on. And that does of course mean that if we were talking about the volume decreasing, everything reverses. Which I know makes you all super happy. That is sarcasm, by the way, if you couldn't hear it in my voice. Um, so it does mean if we have this exact same thing, but the volume goes down, that means the pressure goes up. The volume goes down, the pressure goes up, we actually want fewer moles of gas. If we want fewer moles of gas, now we want the left side, because that's where the fewer moles of gas are in this reaction. That wasn't true for my Born-Haber expression. Fewer moles of gases on the right over here. Fewer moles of gas is on the reactant side for my A and B reaction. So pressure effects are, is usually the ones that people have a lot of questions about, and a lot of that is because it's not just a left and right, you have to analyze which side has more moles of gas, which side has fewer moles of gas. So there's an analysis that has to be done, not just a gut reaction of left and right. Talked about that. Talked about effects of volume and pressure. Um, dominant species in equilibrium. So I'm trying to think of where, where to start with this one, uh, mostly because I'm trying to figure out where this one came from. Because I can say a lot about this, or I could say very little about this. Um, but let's go ahead and we'll, we'll write up a K expression and we'll talk. And that'll, that'll definitely help. So let's talk about weak acids, shall we? Let's talk about weak acid. Um, so if we're talking about weak acids, then we are talking about the fact that I'm going to put something in water. We'll just keep using HF because it's short for me to draw. This is aqueous. So and we're talking about the dominant species at equilibrium. Um, I would need to look this up, but I think this KA value is something like one point four times ten to the negative four. Oh, I'm just going to look this up, because now, now it's going to bother me. Um, KA for HF. Oh, six point three times to the negative four. I have perhaps been teaching this class too long when I'm like, KA of HF, it's somewhere around ten to the negative four. I don't remember exactly where it is, but somewhere like that. Um, so one of the things that we want to talk about is, so first of all, the KA expression is essentially the equilibrium constant for an acid. The main difference between KA versus KC is when we had KC, we could like change the coefficients and we could like reverse the reaction and we could, KC did lots of stuff. When it says KA, that means that the acid altogether is on the left. The un-ionized is on the left. And the proton and the conjugate base goes on the right. All the time. Every time. Proton conjugate base. So when we say KA, we mean this specific setup every single time, period, end of story. Nothing interesting. Nothing else. So KA is always set up in the exact same way. From here, whenever we're talking about dominant species, part of what we're looking for is if we do have this KA value and I have this ten to the negative four, that should tell me that I should have mostly HF. Yeah, I'm going to have some protons and I'm going to have some fluoride ions, those are going to be there too. But the thing I should have the most of should be my HF. You can also make the argument, it's not in the KA expression. Um, we'll go ahead and write out the KA expression since I said that phrase. Uh, so my KA expression for this would be H plus and F minus, all divided by HF. Um, there will be some people that will also go ahead and say that because everything is aqueous, that you should also have water. And it's there. I mean, it's not wrong, uh, it just kind of depends on the setup. If they want you to think about water, or they don't want you to think about water, this is the lovely thing with multiple choice questions. Um, is if it's in there, then everything's aqueous and there's water everywhere. Um, so a lot of times dominant species, you're looking for what you expect to have the most of in terms of KA. Um, there are other definitions that Alex uses, and honestly, that's the part where I almost need a screenshot, because I thought Alex would give like a cutoff and be like, dominant species is something that is there present in this amount. Because one of the strange things, um, but we actually won't get to this on this exam, because the thing is, is that we could actually take a KA value and we could actually then calculate the proton concentration, the fluoride concentr-, the, yeah, fluoride concentration. Um, and if you can calculate H plus, you could always calculate OH minus. You could always calculate hydroxide if you can calculate the proton concentration in aqueous species. All those. Um, but uh, this stuff, uh, calculating all of these values with KA, that's an exam three thing. So actually calculating those values with KA, that, that is an exam three thing. Um, to be honest, y'all can actually do it right now. So for those of you that are like, is it different? No, it's not. Um, but that is where the cutoff of the material is, so therefore, calculating proton concentration from a KA value technically goes on exam three. Um, you have all the skills, by the way. You have, you finished chapter sixteen, you have all the skills for this. Um, but tech, technically, it's on the other one. Uh, so I'm going to hope that that was enough dominant species at equilibrium. Uh, if not, likely what I need is a screenshot from Alex, because I'm probably missing an Alex topic. Um, and that happens to me sometimes, because sometimes I can be like, aha, that's an Alex topic, and other times I'm like, I don't know what's going on here. For example, this is definitely an Alex thing. Um, oh, the Alex program, okay. So actually, we're going to go back. So here's the deal. Um, hmm, hmm, hmm. Actually, no, we'll do this. Um, H two. Oh, we'll assume they're all aqueous. We'll assume that this is, no, it's a gas, what am I saying? We're assuming this is all, all gases. At the right temperature, I two is a gas, I'm okay with that, uh, two I two. Two H two. Also is a gas. And so here's my reaction. My problem states, um, we're going to do two different versions of this. Uh, the problem states, um, that KC is something small, uh, ooh, yeah, something small. Um, five point nine times ten to the negative eight. And uh, initial concentrations of hydrogen and initial concentrations of iodine little I there, uh, are both zero point seven molar. Um, what is the equilibrium concentration of HI? So if you're doing an ice table, it looks something like this. I sometimes call these rice tables because I put the reaction up on top. And initially, it says I have zero point seven molar here, zero point seven molar here. And it doesn't give me any information about HI, which means I get to assume since the product that there's none of it. Since this is a zero, my reaction proceeds forward because it's going to fill in the zero. So this reaction is going in the forward direction to fill in the zero. Now, the question's about the change row. So here, we're going to talk about this two different ways. Um, so since we're talking about it two different ways, I'm actually going to lasso this and copy this. Hopefully. Because we need to talk about how I would set this up. Um, which means it's how the, how all of your instructors would set this up, but also how Alex set this up, because they're not the same. And we know that, by the way. Uh, by we, I mean, kind of mean the royal we, because I assume my colleagues know that. I certainly do. Um, which will have some specific ramifications for all of you. So this is the way I would do this. So I would look at the change row and I would say, so my reaction proceeds forward. This zero has to be not zero anymore, so this is going to be positive. And then there's a two right here, so I'm going to call this positive two X. My hydrogen and iodine are both reactants, they're going to go away. And there is an invisible one in front of each one of these, so that's negative one X. So then, as far as my equilibrium row goes, this is zero point seven minus X, this is also zero point seven minus X. And then my equilibrium concentration of HI is two X. So that way, when I come down to actually solve, I have KC is equal to five point nine times ten to the negative eight. Uh, reactants go on top. So that's, uh, no, they don't. Products go on top, blah. Products go on top, that's two X all squared divided by zero point seven minus X times zero point seven minus X. I can solve from here, um, frankly, the way that there's actually two different ways that I would do this because of how small this number is. I could do the X a small approximation, I could also just square root everything, because this could be that perfect square. And I could go from there. Now, once I get to X, once I get to X, um, which, oh, forget about it, we're just going to go ahead and solve this real quick. Um, so I could do this as a perfect square, but because people are going to ask me questions, uh, or maybe they already have about the X a small approximation, I'm actually going to take a look at this ten to the negative eight. And I'm going to make the assumption that the change in, in X will be very small, there should be a reactant focused, reactant centered um, setup, so therefore, I'm going to assume that the change in X is small, so I'm going to assume that X is zero when it's added or subtracted. When added or subtracted. So what I can do from here is say five point nine times ten to the negative eight is equal to four X squared divided by zero point seven times zero point seven, and then I can go ahead and continue my solving. I'm going to do this on my calculator ever so rapidly, because hopefully this will save me a little bit of time, so that no one has to put in the chat, please actually do the problem that you stated. Valid. Uh, two point eight or two times ten to the negative eight is equal to X squared. So then I square root this and I get X is equal to one point six nine times ten to the negative four. Now, here's the, the thing. Is this is my value of X, but this is the thing I actually want. I actually want the equilibrium concentration of HI, which is two X. Uh, which means I'm, I'm not done yet. Um, so that's X, and I'm going to multiply it times two to get my final answer. So my answer is three point three seven times ten to the negative four molar. That would be my HI concentration. Now I'm done. Um, and so that was all because I solved for X, but based on the ratios I put in my ice table, I actually needed two X to answer the question. So since I needed two X to answer the question, solving for X by itself was not enough, I needed to do more math and plug my X back into my ice table and go ahead and say, aha, there it is. Now, since I did the X is small approximation, I'm going to do one more thing, which is I'm going to double check the five percent rule, which basically says, since I made that approximation, I'm going to take my X value point six nine times ten to the negative four, and I'm going to divide it by my initial concentration. That I think was point seven, point seven. And one point six nine times ten to the negative four divided by point seven times a hundred percent. I get zero point oh two four percent, which is less than five percent. So therefore, the X is small approximation is valid. So if you hear about the X is small approximation, honestly, you can usually figure that out because the K value is small in the direction you're going. So that's actually how I decided that I wanted to do that. I looked at this and I was like, ah, ten to the negative eight. Ten to the negative eight, awesome, tiny, small. Change will be small, because I'm talking about the change in reactants. My K value tells me I should have mostly reactants, so I don't expect that change to be very large, I'm going for it. Then at the very end, I can double check myself to give a five percent rule to take the X that I solved for divided by the original concentration times a hundred. That's basically just saying, I said that the change would be small, that is my change. Is the change less than five percent of the original? That's the question that I was actually answering. Um, is the change less than five percent of the original concentration? So that's the question that this math is answering, because that is supposed to basically be a check on the X is small approximation. Ironically, I have not answered the original question yet, which is what's going on with uh, the ice table. So in order to solve that, I'm going to do the problem again. I know you're excited. Um, so so I did this ice table for me, this is how I would do. So I did this ice table for me, this is how I would do this ice table, I would do the ice table like this. Because that way, my minus X's relate to the fact that I am losing reactants. My reactants should get smaller, my product should get bigger, and. I just use the stoichiometric coefficients. So I'm just looking for X. But then I'd plug it back in the table. Now, if we have the exact same problem. If this was Alex, Alex does something like this. Alex says, well, now. I'm looking for the equilibrium concentration. Of HI. Cool, that's X. So if that's X. Then that's X. Then these things over here still have to be related stoichiometrically. But now these have to be one half X. So then I wind up with an ice table that looks something like this. Because Alex thinks that you're never going back to the ice table. And that you like math and you hate chemistry. So it's going to think that since you love math, that you are happier, I guess. Having, solving for X and then just making the rest of the math work. So that's what Alex does. The question asks for the equilibrium concentration of HI, so that's what X is. The stoichiometric, the stoichiometry though, still has to be there. So in my example, I had negative X's and a positive two X. This has a positive X and negative one half X's. The ratio, still the same, still the same. Um, comparison comparatively. So what we can do now, just to show you that this does still work, by the way, because Alex does it this way. This change row, there's nothing wrong with it. You should notice, by the way, though, that my positives and negatives are the same. So the fact that wherever my zero was is positive, that part actually is the same. And that part should be the same, Alex, if there's a zero somewhere, that positive number should. Be there so that at the end you have a positive value and not a negative value. Um, so the grand question is, what happens to math? Uh, five point nine times ten to the negative eight is equal to, this is now X squared. Divided by zero point seven minus one half X essentially squared. Uh, I'm going to use the X as small approximation again. In part for practice. Uh, in part because that is still a real small number. So I'm basically saying that this X, zero, but it's multiplied by zero. So now I have five point nine to the negative eight. Times point seven squared. So now I have two point eight nine one times ten to the negative eight is equal to X squared. I get X to be equal to. One point seven times ten to the negative four. Did I forget to do something up there? Did I forget the four? Oh, no. No, 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 no. I forgot to do something. Okay, just like my dad. I forgot to do something on my calculator when I did this math up here. Uh, I think I forgot, I forgot to divide by four, this was supposed to be four X. So anyway, if you've ever wondered why. I like to prepare questions and then I get mad when I don't. This would be why, so someone out there has probably figured out that I messed up this math earlier. So because I forgot the four. Oh lovely person that was in my office earlier today. See, I was not joking when I told you that I make these mistakes too. So, yippie skippy. So eight point five, so I forgot to take this four into consideration, so I am redoing this math because I forgot the four X squared. Yep, sure did. Yippee. One point seven. Times ten to the negative four, if you mul, once you multiply that by two. Oh, gosh. I am very sorry, this is the time, by the way, where I actually miss doing these in person. Because when I'm in person, somebody would have stopped me. They would have been about ninety seconds behind me, but they wouldn't have been ten minutes behind me. Um, so anyway. So don't forget the four. Don't forget to do all of your algebra out. Um, don't skip algebra steps, it's bad. So. So here is my value of X from my other rice table. This is then supposed to be the concentration of HI. Um, because it's X. So that part should be the same. And now that I found the math error in my first example, it is the same. Um, so, but I did, I, I lost, I lost this four in my original math, so I went back and divided that by four and then took the square root. And low and behold, you get the same answer, which is what you should get, so. This answer should be identical. No matter which way you do the ice table, that was supposed to be the take home message of all of this math done out. Um, so here is the concentration of HI. Done with stoichiometry where you have two X here. Here is the exact same number of the concentration of HI, done when you have X and negative one half X. So it shouldn't matter which way you do it, you should get the same answer no matter which way it is. Just don't lose track of your numbers as you go through. Well, at least I'm honest. For people that were like, I wonder if she's joking when she says she makes those same math errors, nope, not joking. Absolutely not joking. So I'm taking a drink of my soda. So I do apologize about that. The reason why you should always write out as many algebra steps as you need to make sure you don't lose track of what you're doing, like I did. So it shouldn't matter, either way should work. So the major thing on your ice table or your rice table, that I will say in summary is. Positive should be for things that are appearing. Negative for things that are disappearing. That is typically going to be. Products are appearing, reactants are disappearing typically. Um, so that part is the same. As far as ones and twos, that honestly is up to you, if you like the Alex way, where you solve for X and then you're done, great. If you don't like that, then you're welcome to the stoichiometry way, just don't lose track of your coefficients. Okay, that one's done. Okay, how is Q used in context? Yes, so here, so here's the thing. So here's the thing with Q. So K is at equilibrium, K is equilibrium. Q is any combination. Of reactants and products. Any of them, including at equilibrium. So the, the hard thing is Q in context, sincerely. I don't think I said Q in the above example, but. When I, this part at least was still okay, when we did those initial sets of concentrations. And I said, okay, so the problem tells me initially I have zero point seven molar of. Hydrogen gas and zero point seven molar of iodine gas. And it doesn't mention HI, so therefore I'm going to assume that there's none of it, and then I said, reaction proceeds forward. That could have been a Q calculation. I absolutely could have taken a moment to say. Since I know. That I have the concentration of HI initially divided by squared. Divided by the concentration of H two initially and the concentration of iodine. Initially, I could have said that this is zero squared divided by zero point seven. Times zero point seven and said that's zero. In this case, Q is greater, or sorry, K, my equilibrium constant is greater than Q. Because Q is zero, so therefore that proceeds to the right. I absolutely could have done that as a Q versus K, uh, instead of just saying, ah, I have a zero. I will not have a zero at equilibrium, since I cannot have zero at equilibrium, it goes towards the zero. But I could also have done a K versus Q for that. Um, in one of the original. Where is this? Equilibrium. And some of the original graphs. That we look at, the other one, yeah, this thing. Um, I don't know if you guys like this one or better or worse. But when we're looking at reactions. So these are both. Uh, diagrams of the. Um, reactants and products. And watching them reach equilibrium. So. What you should be able to see here is on the Y axis is concentration in both cases. On the X axis is time also in both cases. And the thing is, is is that there's a place where they stop changing. Um, where the concentrations. Stop changing. And the thing is, this is equilibrium. That's, that's where they stop changing. But the thing is, is is that. You can also call this Q if you want, it just happens to be where Q is the same as K. So literally anywhere on this graph, you can have a value of Q, absolutely anywhere. It's just, there's a place then where Q is the same as K. Um, so I definitely understand the concept of like, what can I expect to see Q in context? You're going to see Q in context usually in three ways, uh, that I would expect to see Q in context. Um, one of them is the way that we were demonstrating where you might not even think about it as being Q. But where we're essentially assessing, ah, there's a zero. Therefore, my reaction is going to proceed towards the zero, technically that is Q because you're thinking about. Where will my reaction proceed as opposed to where I actually am? That is a Q consideration. I'm gonna, I'm gonna number these. So one, um. Which way does reaction proceed? And you might just be thinking, um, towards the zero. We can also set up things that's which ways the reaction proceeds, and that's actually the question that we're asking. Uh, where it might very well just say, here are some concentrations, um, calculate Q. Oh, hold on. Which way is the reaction proceed? I'm gonna say in ice table. So that's the first one. Two. Given some concentrations or some pressures. Um, calculate QC. Which way does the reaction proceed? So that's another way to do QC. Oh, and the last one that I can think of is, uh, basically conceptually. Conceptual questions. Um, so that's actually part of why I grabbed the graphs is because Q is sincerely everywhere. Um, so we could talk about when Q is greater than K, when Q is less than K, when Q is equal to K. Uh, but we can talk about Q in lots of different contexts with equilibrium, mo- mostly because. Q uses the same expression as K, but Q is any combination. Might be equilibrium, might not be equilibrium, Q doesn't know, Q doesn't care. So hopefully that helps with. Q in context. I answer the questions from the last break. Uh, so many things. I did, I answered those four questions. Okay, now that it's five thirty, five twenty-six, oh no. My, my one note is doing much better, okay, um, let us go ahead and let me see if there's any new questions, so are there any new questions from the chat?
Um, I think there's one, you might have answered this one, but I'm not sure. Um, in Le Chatelier's principle, sorry if I pronounced that wrong. Uh, regarding effective volume, is the volume of the reaction vessel being modified? Or volume of any of the reactant slash product are being modified? Uh, is there any difference in the effect of volume for overall volume of reaction vessel being modified? Or volume of one species being modified?
Um, so Frollo Chatelier's principle, uh, and frank, and frankly, I don't even know how to pronounce it because I think it's supposed to be French. And my, my French pronunciation is terrible, so. Um, are there any other questions besides that one, before I start talking about that?
No ma'am, that's, that's, I think it's the newest one.
Okay, okay, cool. Um, so the thing is, is is that when we're thinking about the volume of the container or the overall volume, we are thinking about gases. So because we're thinking about gases, the volume of the container is the same thing as the volume of the gas. Um, so going back to a minute to the, uh, the fat simulation. Um, that's the thing with this is, is that gases will just take the volume of the container. So when we talk about changing the volume of the container, we are technically also talking about changing the volume of the gas. Um, and that, that's just a property of gases, I know that probably sounds a little strange, that's because. Uh, solids and liquids don't act like that. Uh, so it is a unique thing to gases, but frankly, if you've never thought about this before, um, and Frank, I, I refuse to do this demonstration. Um, but imagine for a minute that this pump is actually like a squeeze of like perfume. Uh, or a squeeze of like body spray or something. Um, those gas particles will fill the entire room, right? Like you, you will smell whatever that smell is. Um, so scents tend to be really good examples of gases because. They will absolutely take the shape of their container, uh, whether that is like a giant room where you're like, who has that interesting? Cologne on, or whether it is a car, uh, and that you are, uh, in closer proximity. To whatever that particular smell is, uh, the gases will. Take the shape and fill the container, no matter how big, no matter how small. So when we're talking about changes in volume, that is also changing. The volume of the substance itself because we're talking about gases. That was also the reason why when someone had asked about changing the pressure of solids and liquids. When I basically said that we're just not going to worry about it, or we're going to assume it changes it very little because. Volumes, uh, volumes of liquids and solids do not change very much, uh, with added pressure. So hopefully, hopefully that helps, that's what we're talking about. Yeah, look at that gas, I know there's more space in between the particles, but look at it, fill up the whole space, fills up all the space. Which means. I am back to. There are so many good questions. Where did my other questions go? Um, so ah, what am I actually gonna do? I'm actually gonna go to, um, the ones from my class for a minute. Um, because, so I, I do apologize, uh, but grabbing the ebook is always a little dangerous for me because there's a non-zero chance that it will decide to try to show me some particular student's personal information. Um, and honestly, y'all probably don't care about that, but it's just, it's not a thing you need to see. Um, so I, I don't like to pull up the ebook, uh, while I'm doing this thing. Um, so strong versus weak acids in relation to equilibrium. So something that nobody asked me, but hmm, if you did not know this already, we should mention the fact that you do need to know your strong acids and strong bases. So your strong acids, there's really only seven of them that we care about. I've got a couple extras on the slides. Mostly because every once in a while, either your textbook or real life will mention that there are other strong acids in the world and that's true. Um, but all we really care about is the first seven hydrochloric, hydrobromic, hydroiodic, nitric, chloric, perchloric, sulfuric. So seven strong acids, memorize them however you would like. This is something we asked y'all to memorize last semester as well. Um, so personally, when I am trying to think about memorizing my strong acids, the hard thing is there's three of them that are relatively straightforward and then four that I have to figure out. Um, so as far as memorizing my strong acids, I do usually take a look at the fact that I've got, um, hydrochloric, hydrobromic and hydroiodic. The hard thing then is is that then I've got some bonus ones where I basically need more chloric ones because I then have HClO3 and HClO4 that are bonus ones in addition to the HCl, HBR and HI I was trying to pull off the periodic table. And then there's nitric, but it's just HNO3 and one, two, three, four, five, six, oh, H2SO4. It's like, and then I'm missing one because of course I am. Um, so honestly, I usually just have, here's some binary acids, HCl, HBR, HI, binary acids. Then I've got two more, but they're the more oxygen versions of the chlorine ones. So back to thinking about what makes stronger acids, things with more oxygens, stronger acids. Uh, and more electronegative atoms, stronger acids, uh, HNO3, HS2O4, H2SO4. So those are my acids. Then my strong bases. They're a little bit strange because these you can actually do just off the periodic table. Lithium hydroxide, sodium hydroxide, potassium hydroxide, rubidium hydroxide, one, two, three, four. And then calcium, strontium and barium. Do we do cesium? Hold on. Do we count cesium as a strong base? Sure we do. Should we count cesium? It's just expensive. So I'm like, do we count cesium? Sure we do. Um, so lithium, sodium, potassium, rubidium, cesium, hydroxide, those five. Francium, you could tell me it's a strong base. The thing is francium is radioactive. So we care much more about that that's radioactive. And then we do calcium, strontium and barium. Uh, we don't really do magnesium and beryllium because those are going to be kind of insoluble rock like items. So we just do strong bases off the periodic table. Um, so that is things like, uh, sodium hydroxide. And then remember that your calcium, barium and strontium are going to have two hydroxides for every um, metal because this is my plus one group and this is my plus two group and we are balancing our charges. So first of all, those are my strong acids and my strong bases. The other thing when it comes to equilibrium is whenever we talk about strong acids, we are still actually going to draw a straight arrow. Shocker. Sorry, I want to get my aqueous symbol in there. We are still going to draw a straight arrow because we are going to assume still that our strong acids ionize 100%. So we are still assuming that this reaction is not really an equilibrium expression. Now, we talked about KA values. See what happens when I do this. Uh, KA for HCl. What do I get this time? Yo, no. 10 to the positive six. I thought it was higher than that. Um, so anyway, well, this is positive six. That's pretty big. Um, sorry, I thought it was larger. Um, KA, uh, 1.3 times 10 to the positive six. Um, according to Google. According to Google. Uh, that is very focused on the products. Um, we are just going to assume that those are all products. So for Gen Chem 1, for Gen Chem 2, whatever general chemistry we are in, we are just actually going to assume that this as a straight arrow and it only goes in one direction and we don't actually care about the KA value. As far as we're concerned, this KA value is infinity. I understand 10 to the positive six is still a number. I don't care. Uh, we are basically going to assume that the KA value is enormous for strong acids. That our, our strong acids just go 100%. And honestly, that's going to work very well for us. And it's, the thing is, we make that assumption because when we're thinking about solutions and we're thinking about aqueous solutions and we're thinking about why we care about strong acids, that assumption is going to work very well for us. So even though it's an assumption, it will still work very well. Versus our weak acids, we are going to assume that those have still that equilibrium arrow. So I'm actually going to use HF again. Because HF does have mostly the un-ionized form. So we're going to have mostly this stuff. It's still going to be mostly HF. Because again, a lot of what we're trying to describe is how good of an acid is this? If I'm trying to describe how good of an acid this is, part of what I'm caring about is how well does it give off protons in solution? My HCl gives off protons really, really well. It'll give off so many protons, no worries. My HF, on the other hand, is not going to give me nearly as many protons per amount of HF. It's just not going to. So there is a strong versus weak acids in relation to equilibrium. I actually think, okay, so I answered this question. I actually think this question was really similar to the dealing with coefficients in the change column. So I think I actually also did this one. Um, what else do I want in here? Um, okay, I talked about how to memorize the strong acids and strong bases. Uh, I most usually use the periodic table. Um, another question was, will all of chapter 17 be on the exam? Nope. Um, we are going to stop a little bit early, so we will not actually finish 17 for this exam. I got a lot of people that wanted to know things like, what are the main topics? So one of the hardest parts I always have with describing main topics is usually when people want to know main topics. The thing is, is is that you, I could say the main topics, but then if you came back to me later and you were like, but hey, you didn't mention this thing. And I would be like, well, no. It was only on one question. It wasn't a main topic. Um, so usually what people are looking for when they say main topics is they want to know what is on the exam and what's not on the exam. Um, and honestly, aside from what the exam will cover, that's really the best that I can do. Um, because any more granular detail than that usually leads me down paths that either I say things that then you try to interpret extra that doesn't really help anybody. Um, or again, it doesn't quite work very well. So it's really difficult for me to tell you like what the main topics are aside from this stuff. Uh, you can always ask, uh, and I'm always happy to answer as close and as best as I can. Um, there was a reason, by the way, why I like highlighted all of these equations. Um, I'm trying to think on here. Um, oh, we also haven't cut questions yet. So, so right now it's, uh, 5:40 on Monday afternoon, evening. And we currently have 32 questions, but y'all won't see 32 questions. Um, y'all are going to see like somewhere between 28 and 30. So we're going to cut at least two, if not four questions from the exam. So like right now, all the things highlighted, super useful. But maybe one of these five things, maybe one of those five gets cut. I don't know. Maybe we'll only have POH on the exam and we'll not ask you a pH question. That could absolutely happen. Um, maybe you really like solving for KW with, um, KW and not with PKW. And then you don't actually think that you need both of those. Uh, difficult, difficult to talk about what is and is not on the exam. Ah. Okay, talked about positive and negative Xs. That bothers people a bunch. Um, so okay, this actually is one I can do, exothermic and endothermic stuff. Um, so one of the other questions that I got was over Le Chatelier's principle and dealing with exothermic and endothermic. So this might even be one of the ones that is from the end of chapter questions. I just don't know it. Um, so here's the deal. Uh, and actually my class asked me this on Friday. So they asked, what are all the ways essentially to know if something's exothermic or endothermic? So how do you know? A reaction is endo or exothermic? And I think I came up with four ways. Let's go through these. Uh, one, we tell you. Hey, we are allowed to do it that way. Um, it counts. It counts as an option. We might just say the following reaction is exothermic. We can totally, absolutely do it that way. This is part of the reason why I like to encourage people to write on the question, to underline things, to circle things, to highlight things, is because sometimes we just tell you it is exothermic, is endothermic, end of story. Uh, two, we can give you a delta H value. So my delta H is less than zero, that's exo. My delta H is greater than zero, that's endo. Um, this especially can actually hide pretty easily because if you got that reaction to A goes to B, and then just this little delta H would be over here, positive five millijoules per mole. Um, so sometimes it gets lost even if it is present. So it tends to be in that same line as the reaction. So that's an option. Uh, three. Oh, um, this one's not very common, especially in Gen Chem 2, but we can do it, which is we could tell you things like, uh, the beaker gets hot. And that would still be an exothermic reaction. We could tell you that the beaker gets cold. And that would be an endothermic reaction. Uh, we don't typically do that as much in Gen Chem 2, but this would still convey the same information. So is that a way we commonly do it? No. Is that an option? Absolutely. The last way, and I bet this is what the person wanted to know. I bet this is the way the end of chapter question does it. Uh, the last way looks something like this. Look at me putting in the state symbols. That doesn't usually happen. There we go. Uh, and that's all it says. That's the only thing it says. It doesn't say anything else. It just says this and no more information. You just get a reaction and that's it. Now it has to be a very specific type of reaction. Okay, now we can't do this with just anything. It does have to look something like this and I'll show you what the trick is. This is where bonds are breaking. And it's the only thing that can possibly be happening here. It also has to be this version of the water equation where the only thing that's happening is you started off with water and you wound up breaking off that for a little proton by itself. Bonds are being broken. Bonds are being broken. That is endothermic. That's what they are. Endothermic. So this is the other way that we can do this. And if the reaction went the other way, we could definitely also have a different reaction setup. I am cheating here. I'm just using the water equation. Um, but if it went the other way, this would be bonds forming and so this one would be exothermic. So again, not very common, but we can, we can do it that way. Can you guys still hear me?
Uh, yes ma'am, I believe we can.
Okay, good. Just checking. So it's the good news and bad news. It's like, where did the sound go? Okay, as long as you guys can still hear me, life is good. Um, okay, but those, so those are the four different ways that I can think of off top of my head. Um, I did think about this a little bit. This is still the only four ways I can think of to tell you if a reaction is endothermic or exothermic. Okay, are there other questions out of the chat?
Uh, no ma'am, not that I can see.
Okay. So, tell you what. Um, there is a question that is kind of like a favorite question. Um, and it's a favorite question for a couple of reasons. And I'm going to make up some numbers, so I apologize about that, but it looks something like this. Um, I will make this bigger in just a moment. The KW of pure water is, and I'm just going to make a weird number. Um, 4.9 times 10 to the negative 13. Uh, at a given temperature, what is the pH of pure water at this temperature? Okay, so let me go ahead and first of all, make this bigger so y'all can actually see it. Let me go ahead and fix a couple of things on it so that it makes sense. So I just said a given temperature. I didn't actually say if it was what the temperature is. Um, but it certainly isn't 14, so it's not 25 degrees Celsius anymore. Um, so the thing is, is is that one of the things that happens is people get really used to the pH of pure water being 25 degrees Celsius or, or being the pH at 25 degrees Celsius, which is in fact seven. But this is only true at 25 degrees Celsius. We however, are at a given temperature, so this is not seven. You are definitely supposed to use the KW value that's given in the problem. So this is going to use a couple of different assumptions and these are on that potentially useful information. So here's what we're going to use. So we have a value for KW, lovely. We know that it's just water. It's pure water and the goal is pH. Well, pH, and I'm going to go ahead and scroll up here. I'm just going to copy this then, um, so I don't have to scroll back and forth nearly so much. Um, see. So making it bigger. Uh, some people just screenshot. So you really just want this stuff in here. Because we are really just going to use these things. Uh, so using these few things from the potentially useful information page. Uh, it's a little granulated. That's too bad. That's okay. I'll rewrite them anyway. So pH is given on the potentially useful information page. It's negative log of the proton concentration. Lovely. So I have KW. I want proton concentration so I can calculate pH. Well, I also know that the KW from this equation is equal to my proton concentration times my hydroxide concentration. And if that is all equal to 4.9 And that that is all equal to 4.9 times 10 to the negative thirteen. So 4.9 times to the negative thirteen out of the question. So, but the problem now is I have two variables. I have H plus and I have OH minus. I can't have both of those. So there's a final trick to this problem, which is pure water. That's the last trick. If this is pure water, then that means in order to get this KW value, I essentially just had water and I got H plus NOH minus out of it. I got protons and I got hydroxide. Which means if that's the only thing I have and there's nothing else to perturb this and there's nothing else to add or subtract from this, that means that my proton concentration should be the same as my hydroxide concentration. This is the same idea if we were saying that basically I have a pure sample of this and then I should be adding protons, I should be adding hydroxide. They should go in the same quantity because I started off with a pure sample of my reactant. So really then, this 4.9 times to the negative thirteenth is actually of the proton concentration times itself. Which means that's really the proton concentration squared. So then I can, there's no coefficients to look at. Phew. I can just squirt root that number. And then I get the proton concentration to be seven times 10 to the negative seven. And then I can plug that into my pH equation. And then I get a pH of a pH of, come on, erase the thing I want to erase. There we go. Oh, come on. There we go. I get a pH of 6.15. So this is the other kind of question where it, it's a very short to phrase it, but you actually have to use a lot of different components of KW of protons, of hydroxide. So there's a lot of different pieces that you get to utilize out of something that looks relatively short. Um, so there's a couple of assumptions you have to make in there. The main one being that since you have pure water, you are gonna have the same proton concentration as hydroxide concentration. And then the other thing to keep in mind is should we actually give you a different value of KW? You probably need to use it. So it's really tempting to say pure water, that must be seven. That's only true at twenty-five degrees Celsius. That's not true at other temperatures. Other questions so far?
Oh, there hasn't been any new ones.
Okay. So we've got about five minutes left, but my voice is starting to go. And seems like you guys are also about mentally done. Um, what I am gonna be doing is I'm gonna take the um, four questions from the end of chapter questions in the follow-up video, uh, as well as uh, at least a couple more examples that involve, um, ice tables or rice tables. So that I can basically fill out and finish out, um, some of the ones that my class asked me on Friday. And just make you guys a lovely, uh, follow-up video. But that's gonna be the plan. So I'm gonna let you guys go a little bit early unless there's any other questions.
All right. Well, it doesn't look like that there is anything else or any other questions from people. So um, thank you so much, Dr. Taylor, for this wonderful review. Um, I hope everyone found this information helpful and best of luck on your next exam.